Now seven o'clock, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is since one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as customary before our meetings, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to announce this meeting is being recorded by, recorded and televised by Whitman-Hanson-Kale Access. I need a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Need a motion to accept correspondence in the read file. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there anybody here in public forum that would like to speak? That, any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none. Thank you. Approve the meeting minutes for open session July 23rd, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also approve the meeting minutes for open session August 20th, 2024. Do I hear a meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Chairman's report? None. Schedule, okay, here we go. Schedule a hearing meeting, public hearing, the application of Lone Wolf Partners Incorporated for the transfer of the common vicula all alcohol license on the premise located at 546 Washington Street from McQuiggin's LLC doing business as McQuiggin's Pub to the Lone Wolf Partner Incorporated doing business as Albee Tavern. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Opening a public hearing on the application of Indian River Association Associates Incorporated for the transfer of the common vicula license, all alcohol license on the premise located at 552 Washington Street from the patio at McQuiggin's LLC doing business as The Patio at McQuiggin's to Indian River Associate Incorporated doing business...
I think we should probably, if anyone's here to speak at the hearing, first one, we should probably let them.
You want to speak on the hearing?
Are we having two separate hearings or one big?
Do it all at the end, yeah.
All right.
Doing business as The Patio at Martini's. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Anybody? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. On the new business?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Well, you wanted...
If you could also...
Well, this is part of it too, right?
The applicant is also seeking, that should be a separate vote.
Okay, all right. Would anybody like to get up and talk about it and speak on it? Could you get up? Rich? No?
If I could.
Yes.
No, I don't want to speak. When, when it's done, I'd like to get up, say a couple of words, if that's possible.
Sure. So we have, well, we still have two items on the new business, so...
We also have the last item under scheduled hearings meetings, the applicant is seeking approval, if we could read that and take a vote.
I'm sorry. The applicant is also seeking approval to retain a Sunday sale, Sunday sales hour beginning at 10:00 a.m. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
That means brunch is coming back, I assume, right?
Huh?
Brunch is coming back?
So...
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, you want them to speak on it or you want to jump into new business?
Go to new business until it's all done.
Okay. All right, we'll get it all done, that way they can get it done. On the new business, act on the application of the Lone Wolf Partners Incorporated doing business as Albee's Tavern for an amusement, live entertainment license, and a common vicula license on the premise located at 546 Washington Street. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
And act on the request, act on the application of Indian River Associates Incorporated doing business as The Patio at Martini's for an amusement, live entertainment license, common vicula license, and a public entertainment on Sunday, Sunday's license on the premise located at 552 Washington Street. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
And we still, all right, the last one, act on the request?
Nope.
Nope, that's not it. Okay, that's it, right?
Yes.
Okay, now, Rich, I'd like for you to introduce the new owners. Do I hear?
Mr. Chairman, and through you to the board, I have with me this evening is the new buyers and the new owners of McQuiggin's Pub and The Patio at McQuiggin's, none of them who really want to get up and speak.
Okay.
But we do have Mr. Johnny Perret, we have Don Castanetti, we have Nancy Ruda, and we have Joe Perret in the back, and their attorney, Richard Hickey. I just want to take a minute.
Sure. Richie, you deserve, you deserve it, no problem.
It's gonna be a quick minute. This has been a very emotional time. This is terrible. I'm really bad at wakes. This has been, I just did something to the computer. Can I screw this up? It's been a very emotional time for my family. Fifteen years ago, we opened the pub. I don't think that there was anybody that gave us fifteen minutes. And we've been through an awful lot, including a pandemic, which I'm very proud of the fact that we kept thirteen people in payroll the whole time. And then when I opened The Patio, people really thought I lost my mind. And we've been there five years, people gave us about five minutes. I'd like to think that, first of all, I want to thank you. I want to thank the police department, the fire department. I want to thank all of the town officials who have been wonderful to us in the last fifteen years. We've never really had any issues or problems. I think we've been a huge asset to the community. I think that we transformed Whitman Center.
Yes.
On any given night, I can go into the pub and know eighty-five percent of the people there. And any night I can go into The Patio and I don't know eighty-five percent of the people. So the proof would be if you all wanted to get in your car on Monday night around seven o'clock and take a ride through the center, you'll see what the town of Whitman Center looked like twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, forever, until fifteen years ago. And I know it sounds crazy, but it excites me when I go out and see the center is full of cars. It has become a destination spot, and people are literally coming from all over the place to come here. And again, I just want to say thank you. I have full faith and confidence in the new buyers. I know that they're gonna keep us proud, and we're going out with our head high. Thank you very much.
Just, Rich, I'd like to, look at you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say I agree with you, because before you opened the pub, that end of town, well, there was no cars. Now, that end of town, you can't find parking space.
And we've never had an issue about parking.
Well, you down church or whatever, right.
You have it nice spread out. And I loved your Irish cake, unbelievable.
We still have some. We're gonna be around a little longer.
Good, good, good.
All right. Also, Rich, I need to understand that we will not be handing out these licenses until the other ones are returned.
Yeah, that's fine. This, this has to be sent to ABCC. Hopefully, it'll be done tomorrow morning.
Right.
ABCC has several weeks to act on the transfer, so the new owners don't take effect until the license has been transferred.
Right, right. So you'll be given these when you turn in the others. You know something? Thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done for Whitman.
Thanks.
Been a long, wonderful...
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Thank you. Congratulations. And please think about keeping the Irish cake.
Three Italians.
Oh, good. There you go. It's all right, I'm Italian too.
Oh, that cleaned out quick, huh? Okay. Act on the request of Homestead Harvest for a one-day liquor license on, on Saturday, October 26th, 2024, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. in the conjunction with the Ninth Annual Witch Walk, oh, Witch Walk Pub, I remember that, yeah, crawl, subject to the receipt of, is subject to receipt of a fifty-dollar license, fee no later than the end of business on October 24th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Does this mean they're gonna have everybody, all the women dressed up and they're gonna be walking around?
It's very popular, so...
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
Just to sit and watch them walk around town is amazing.
You want a second?
Yeah, second.
Second.
What, you do walking?
No, it's always sold out.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's funny. Act on the request of the town clerk to issue a warrant for unlicensed dogs to the animal control officer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I can't.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain was the word I was looking for, thank you.
Act on the request of Matthew Price on behalf of the Whitman Youth Football and Chairleading to construct additional storage as an extension to the existing storage shed located at Memorial Field and to install a shadow box to the right of the garage. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there anybody here to explain what you, would you like to explain?
Yeah, do it.
All right, thank you.
How you guys doing?
Good.
So, over the course of the years have, have gone, there's been more and more kids that have joined the, the foundation, the, Waymouth Football, Whitman Football, sorry. And over that amount of time, more equipment has come in. The shed that was built, I'm not even sure when it was built, but it was meant for a smaller amount of kids that were playing. Now we have a lot more of the kids that are there, which means a lot more helmets, shoulder pads, and you name it, everything, cheerleading uniforms, everything. So we're just asking, instead of moving everything out, putting it back in every single year, almost for every single game, to build an additional storage shed off to the side, like a lean-to. It'll be about ten by eight, maybe a little bit smaller, just enough so we can put the shoulder pads and some totes in there, just so there's a little bit of breathing room inside. So that when, you know, there are six, seven of us trying to walk around, it's not, you know, everyone's bumping shoulders and, you know, it's just havoc. It would just make it a lot easier for us, and when we do grow, which we expect to grow, that we would have that additional storage already on there. So, as far as the storage, sorry, the shadow box, we'd like that. So instead of parents calling us, you know, three, four days a week saying, hey, what's going on with this, this, and this, because a lot of them still aren't looking on Facebook or anything like that when we put out the posts, we can put, you know, notifications or special, you know, anything special going on and display our trophies during that time, each of which will be locked at all times, they'll both be enclosed. And I think it would, it would really help us out a lot, you know.
Yeah. I don't have an issue with it. Does anybody like to discuss it? Yes.
Just suggest you speak to the building department if you haven't already. I don't know if there's any permits required to construct something on the field.
Right. So that's who I spoke to first, and then he said that he doesn't have an issue with it, just bring it up to you guys. And he said it's within, you don't even need a permit for it. We just thought we'd, we'd try to figure out who to talk to, because, I mean, it is technically city property, so we just want to get this approved. We're gonna take care of all the building supplies, all the above.
You, you haven't had any issue with anybody trying to break into them, have you?
No.
And I just, by doing this, you'll probably keep the equipment better, because it won't be everybody on top of each other and things everywhere, be more organized, and actually keep the length, longevity of the equipment longer.
Yes, exactly. Yep. There'll be less movement of it, so, like I said, nothing, we want to pull everything out, put it back in, keep replacing totes after totes after totes every single year. When the shoulder pad rack falls over, shoulder pads will get damaged, you know, it's just little things like that. So it'll help out, you know, putting the money towards better use rather than spending it on more equipment that we bought a year ago. You know what I mean?
And you had people volunteer or monies and such to put this together? God bless you.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
Well, actually, I'm a contractor, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna do it in my spare time, take me and my guys, go over there and take care of it. We'll just, you know, leftover supplies that we have, plus whatever we need to buy.
Community involvement is the key.
Absolutely.
That's wonderful. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, the original shed was built in 2011.
2011? I've only, I've lived in Whitman for eight years, so...
Right. How many, how many keys, does anybody in the town need a key for that in case there's an issue like the police or the fire department?
There's a code. It's just the garage door access, right?
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, my only concern, I guess, is that it is done properly, you know?
Yes.
I mean, it's good to hear that you're a contractor and somebody who knows what they're doing is, is doing it. Did, did you propose a plan to the building inspector, or, I know you said like the rough dimensions, but like siding and stuff is gonna be roughly gonna match what's currently there, that kind of thing?
Yeah. So the game plan is, everything's gonna match exactly. The shingles are gonna match as close as you can, the siding as close as you can. It's gonna be vinyl, the front of it's gonna have a lock on it. You know, we're gonna keep it as safe as possible. I mean, after all, we are responsible for everything that's within the shed. So if anything was to happen, then it's our responsibility to make sure that we replace it, which the whole reason why we're doing this is so that we don't have to replace stuff.
Is there power to those sheds?
There's, there is power. No water, but power.
Yeah.
Yep.
What was your name again?
Matthew Price.
Matthew Price. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none? All in favor? We already motioned, right?
Yeah.
Did we motion a second?
Yep.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda is a citizen's petition. And Laura, I am gonna have to ask you, we will be considering an animal noise complaint from the resident. Am I allowed to say his name?
Yes.
Okay.
He has to say it.
George Mager against the property at 185 School Street, owned by Laura Howe. I understand that Ms. Howe wishes to recuse herself, herself from her town position for the purpose of discussion. As such, I want to be clear that Ms. Howe will not be participating in or voting on the matter in the official capacity as a member of the select board or animal control officer. However, Ms. Howe has the individual right as the property owner to be present for the select board's discussion of the matter and to participate to the same extent as other members of the public. And I would ask Ms. Howe, please, if you could take a seat.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, the gentleman. George, are you here? Please?
Board of Selectmen, I'm George Mager. I live right next to Laura. There's been a problem that I need to bring in front of you, and it, it just doesn't get resolved, and it's really bringing some strong issues. For the past thirty years, Laura Howe has had dogs that have been uncontrolled, and they're barking, including even today, okay? A constant problem. She does not control the noise. She doesn't care. She just lets the dogs out. They do their thing. And it's a business for her now, okay? The hobby kennel, I believe it's called. Couple of years ago, she was allowed to have this. And it basically boils down to she has a business in the middle of a residential area, okay? Barking dogs in a residential area. Worst problem, and that problem with the dogs has been for about thirty years. A worst problem over the last three years has been the roosters that she's brought in, okay? She has had the audacity to put the kennel, or the roost for the roosters and so forth and the chickens, directly next to my house. Not that it would make a whole lot of difference, because roosters are very loud. But she purposely put it right next to me, right under my bedroom window. Not one, but two roosters, okay? One wasn't enough. She thinks that's funny.
You'll hear what I think in a minute, George.
Okay. Now, I want you to put your plate, put yourself in this situation. For the past three years, which is over a thousand days, I've been awakened about four o'clock in the morning because of this screaming rooster and animals. That in itself can cause a problem called sleep deprived, which causes health problems eventually, called sleep debt accumulation. And that can bring anything from tiredness, which I definitely have. I have to do naps during the day. I can't do it during the day at nighttime. And I basically get four hours sleep each night, because I'm up by at least four o'clock, five o'clock in the morning. Today was about 5:10, the rooster started, and for an hour and a half was making considerable noise. All right. So what have I tried to do to alleviate this problem? Well, I've contacted the police, but they have not been helpful. They basically listened to me, they've talked to me. The first person I tried to get ahold of about two, three years ago, one of the staff officers, listened to me and basically kinda joked around with me. I was looking for direction. What should I do with this problem, the rooster, okay? It's, it's interruptive. And by the way, it's not just in the morning, it's all day long, this crowing. And I asked the police officer, you know, what can I do? And he basically, he told me two things that weren't incorrect, one of which was Whitman has a, what do you call it, the right to farm. And there was another thing that he said incorrectly. And he, and it didn't go anywhere. And basically ended the conversation with, roosters lay eggs, okay? A rooster is a male, okay? They don't lay eggs. So I don't know what that was about, whether he was joking with me or playing around or what. Now, I've been before the, the Board of Selectmen about two to three years ago, and I brought, I, I didn't realize I had to be scheduled and so forth, so I just kinda dropped in. And I did talk to Mr. Kowalski and gave him a quick overview, and he handed me off, are you the manager now?
Town administrator.
Okay. Mr. Hyman was the manager before. He handed me off to him, or, yeah, him, and also the chief of police. So I talked with the chief of police to begin with, and he looked like he could be helpful or whatever. And I said I was gonna give him a email of the basic history of what I was going through, and I did that. And I waited one, two weeks, and I got nothing. So I sent him a second email, asking him, the problem's still there? What's going on? And I got an email back, and I got the sensation that he was irritated by the fact that I even questioned that nothing was done, okay? Chief Hanlon, I saw later after that, and I actually met with him face to face. And again, I tried to reason with him again. He was courteous, he talked with me and so forth. Nothing was resolved, though, okay? We got nowhere. So with the police, I've got nowhere. And also, I called up the police station in the beginning, and I would tell them, hey, it's four in the morning, it's three in the morning, whatever the wake-up time was, do you hear this? And he said, yes, I do, I heard it. Okay, would you register? And they don't, they, they don't really do anything, they just put it in the register. I gave that up, because I don't think that was getting anywhere, other than putting me in the log. I also talked with Mr. Kowalski. I called him up and I presented my problem, and he said he was gonna talk to the individuals that I had mentioned dealing with the problem. And I never heard from him in two years. So basically, I've gotten nowhere with town officials and so forth. Now, I'm trying for the second time to reason with you and show you there is a definite problem here. This is the problem. Now, that's the history and the situation that I'm in. And I'm very angry, very angry, and I'm at the, at the end of my patience with this problem. I need to hear from you people what you think. Could I start with you, Mr. Kane?
I, I think...
Where's your position on this?
We'll defer to the town administrator as far as the procedure. Does, both parties get to speak first, and then we discuss? What is the actual procedure?
I'd like to hear what Laura has to say, so that we understand.
First off, there is a problem. I'm gonna read a letter, one of three, that you've received from my lawyer over thirty-two years. And it is addressed to you, and it's from Robert J. Burks, and it's dated July 28th, 2009, okay? And it says, George and Birgit Mager, 189 School Street, Whitman, Mass. 02382. I read Laura and Scott Howe, 185 School Street, Whitman, Mass. Dear Mr. and Mrs. Mager, please be advised that this office represents Laura and Scott Howe, 185 School Street, Whitman, Massachusetts. The following has been reported to my office. Mr. Mager has thrown rocks at Mr. and Mrs. Howe's dogs. You have caught number two, that was one. Number two, you have called the Whitman Police and the Whitman Dog Officer and filed faults and libelous reports against my clients. And three, you have continually harassed the Howes. If this conduct does not cease immediately, we will take action against you through the court system. Yours truly, very truly, Robert J. Burks, Esquire. That was my lawyer, George, since I was fourteen years old. I am fifty-eight in April. When you say this causes things, trust me, I know, because my medical record states that I have Fibromyalgia, the worst case they ever saw, and I'd be crippled for life through Abington, and the second, CPTSD, which makes PTSD look like a walk in the park, for all of your bogus complaints against me and my home and my animals, which have never been a business a day that I have lived. You are the problem, sir. And I have more to do in town than to listen to this. We have business to discuss. You ignored the town citizens' petition that you brought forth, Mr. Mager. And I sat there until midnight, Article 50, and it was unanimously voted down. And you did not even vote for your own situation. My animals were never moved to your side to be under your bedroom window, which would be absolutely ludicrous, because they're closer to my bedroom window than your house, okay? And what I have on my property is there legally. I have a legal kennel license, and I have a legal chicken license. And we are a right-to-farm community. And I am tired of you calling out onto the police, animal control, Board of Health, and anyone that will listen against me...
Laura.
...and using our town resources. So expect a harassment suit, Mr. Mager.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Just procedurally, she should be addressing the chair.
Right. Right. Anyway, yes, sure.
Fine, me is fine.
So now, as far as the hearing goes, what is the procedure?
I think at this point, you can, it, it, this isn't really a hearing, I mean, it's a complaint that was filed, and, and certainly you can take it under advisement, or you can comment and discuss now, or you can table it to another meeting, or-
Just before we make a decision, I'd like to re, the Board of Health was at her, her house today, and he sent in a report, and it says, uh, he went there at nine, on 9/17, says, "I inspected the property at 185 School Street. This, uh, inspection was triggered because of a complaint made. I would also like to note that the inspection of the coop was to be completed later in the month for the property animal bond inspection. A copy of the inspection form will be attached to the report. My inspection turned up no issues. Both the coop and the kennels were clean, all animals looked healthy, and had fresh food and water. The dogs did bark, but only, only around ten seconds. When I first entered the property, which is normal behavior. While at the property, the rooster did crow a small amount of time, two or four times. However, in my opinion, it is not particularly, uh, loud, not a particularly loud bird. I would also like to point out that the residence has a standing license for their animals, and there is no law or regulation in Whitman against having roosters." And this is from Dan Kelly, the, um, uh, health inspector. Um, me personally, when you're, you're asking what we can do, how I work on things in this town is whether I agree with something or disagree with something, if town meeting votes, they're my boss. Town meeting says, I do. I was not in favor, I voted against marijuana, uh, sales of marijuana in the town. Town meeting voted it, so we'll be getting them eventually. I don't like the idea, but they are my boss. You did a citizens' petition, uh, both of you spoke your minds to town meeting, they voted not to go with the citizens' petition and allow Laura, and I don't even think you were, are you an ACO officer at the time, or no?
Yes.
But you were not a select person?
No.
Right. So they voted, uh, in favor of her that, uh, she's allowed to have the dogs and the rooster. So your citizens' petition was turned down. And like I say, if town meeting says that, whether I agree or disagree, I have to do what they say. And I've been by her house a number of times, I live off a school street, right? And I have not seen, uh, or heard anything, but I'm only there during the day. So, I mean, I don't see an issue, but as I say, I don't live next door. But as I said, town meeting says, and they say it's fine, then I have to go with town meeting. That would be my position.
Okay, that's the, that's the rooster, but it does not address the problem with the noise. So you're in agreement that I should be woken up-
You're gonna speak, sir, you shouldn't enter the microphone, please.
Mrs. Dolbo, do you feel that it's okay that I'm woken up every morning for the last thousand days plus?
Right.
And that's okay?
No, I'm not agreeing with that. I mean, the gentleman, the house across the street from me has chickens, and I hear them, but I just block it out of my mind.
And I'm a rooster dog.
I don't know if they have a rooster, but I know they have chickens walking on, down, up and down the street. They get out, yes.
Is this lady, she has a rooster?
Wait a second, sir, I've been recognized.
Yes, sure.
As far as the procedure goes, do we speak, and then he speaks, and we go back and forth continuously? Is that how the procedure works? I think he, he had his ability to speak.
Well, he's asking our opinions now.
Aside from what he's asking, Ms. Howe had her, was able to speak-
Right.
-and now we can move on.
Right.
Okay. So we don't have to go back and forth, we don't have to justify ourselves, we can make it clear what we think, and then we can move on, but we don't have to go back and forth.
Okay. So what's your opinion on the issue?
I agree, I think town meeting spoke. I think people have the right to own chickens and dogs, and sometimes they get too loud, and you can, you can go one route and be real hard-nosed, and, and you can try and do that, and it didn't seem to work out very well for you over the last couple of years. Or you can try another route, and maybe reach across and try to be kinda cordial and figure this out together, you know, and compromise. But right now, I think it's, it's, Ms. Howe's prerogative to own chickens and have dogs, and if there's a noise complaint, file a noise complaint.
And, yeah, obviously sympathize that you're waking up in the middle of the night. I mean, I imagine that would be, I have a toddler, so I know how sleep deprived I can get. Um, I was going through the, we do this a lot with dangerous dog hearings, it's a very formal process, um, so I was reviewing the right to farm by a lot to see what recourse is the board is supposed to take in this kind of a complaint. And we did, you know, vote in a provision, resolution of disputes. Uh, any person having a complaint about farm activity or practice, so it would really only apply to the chickens, the roosters, and not the dogs, and I don't think they count as a farm activity, is encouraged to seek an alternate resolution to the complainant, including talking directly with the involved farmer, um, kind of as Sean was saying. Any person who seeks to complain about the operation of a farm may notwithstanding pursuing any other remedy, file a grievance with the Board of Selectmen, the building enforcement, uh, the zoning enforcement officer, or the Board of Health, depending on the nature of the grievance. The noise complaint, you could go almost any of those three routes. The Board of Health, accepting cases of imminent danger to, uh, public health risk, may forward a copy of the grievance to the Board of Selectmen, which shall review and facilitate the resolution of the grievance and report its recommendations back to the Board of Health. So, um, I think if you've got a, if you'd like to start the formal complaint process, talk to the health inspector, um, it may take a-
I've seen him before, he's not much help, to be honest with you. This neighbor also poisoned the brook, uh, I think her husband would spray poison, I hit the brook, killed the water, and the water's what I used a lot of times to put on the, hello? I hit the floor right now.
You also don't have the right to lie about me.
All right, Laura, let him, let him finish.
And this is the reason I don't deal with her, but she's been a constant problem, and I, and I'm not exaggerating here, that's okay? Learn her lies and her-
I think I've heard enough. He has his ability to speak, Ms. Howe had her ability to speak, unless one of us wants to make a, a motion to do something, I think we can move on.
Okay. Can Laura speak to that, what your accusations, and then we'll decide what we're gonna do.
Yes, I actually did not bring up when Mr. Porter came to my home, out of respect that Mr. Porter has since passed away. And I was actually going to revise what I said when George, when Justin so eloquently brought up all of the avenues that George has already gone through for thirty-two years, which is why I have Fibromyalgia and why I have CPTSD. So we can get into facts that I have, or we can listen to him put stuff out there in the airwaves. After the rooster vote, and prior to the rooster vote, I took Beru in every single evening because we did not get Beru as a rooster. We got him as a chicken, given to us by our ACO partner, Joe, with, from a hoarding case of an elderly woman. I took in the animals, like six of them, and one a year later, after bringing two coffee runs, the barn in the house, um, the barn, the horse barn, um, the, in the house, and my daughter would dress up, the rooster became a rooster. Because he does crow, and even though George always got up at four in the morning, because remember the time that at four in the morning, my dog Bogey was out, and he jumped the fence, and you had your little dog, and I thought, "Oh no, this could go bad."
Laura, Laura, Ms. Howe.
And said-
You should address the chair. No, I didn't directly.
Therefore, therefore, well, he addressed me, so I apologize. So therefore, I brought in Beru to be polite, just and then put him out in the morning. But then after the petition, and after all of that stress to my family, because remember, my daughter was twelve at the time, um, and she's constantly had to be under stress of her animals being gone, um, or taken from them because of his complaints. He then, two weeks later, sent Mr. Porter from the Conservation Department to come to my home with accusations of us putting poison in the brook, or anywhere on our property, which I have a koi fish pond right out front that everybody in town sees. I have the chickens, as he said, out on that side, but I also have dogs year-round, and we don't use any chemicals. We use diametaceous earth, we use lime, um, we use bone meal, that his dog, his black lab, that he was seen by Wayne Carroll and called to the police department, there is a record, and Victor was called out with him beating his black lab on the front yard. That black lab would go into my garage and take the bone meal and run back to his house with it. So I am done with being humiliated, I'm done with being lied about. We all know the facts, we all know what I have for evidence, and what he has put on everyone's agenda, year after year, every other month, whenever he so-called feels. I pay taxes in my town. I live in a property that my husband maintains, and I maintain very well. I have animals that are therapy dogs, well, now for my own daughter, but I have animals that do a community service. I take a lot of respect and pride in my ownership of animals, in my ownership of a home, my grandfather's home, who died in my arms, ninety-nine and four months young, with a smile on his face, never took an abatement from this town, and used to climb through his windows and unlock his doors when his wife would lock herself out accidentally. I have tried to work with Mr. Mager. He has shaken my husband's hand, not only two years ago, to cut a tree down that was hanging over our pond, and he promised to never do this to us again. And to reach out to us if he had any issues, not an issue like he doesn't get his way and then calls the police about our radio, they come and they say, "It's, did you turn it down?" My husband's like, "No." And then they go over there and he says, "Sound travels downhill." We can say all we want to say, but I have nothing more to say to Mr. Mager, other than he will be receiving a harassment suit, because this is unfair to my family, it's unfair to my decency. I try to come here as a respectable person, and I don't, I do not appreciate allegations that are unfounded, and every single building inspector, Board of Health person, and Animal Control, over thirty-two years has been to my house, and I have not had one substantiated complaint, which I am very proud of.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, we've heard both sides. Anybody'd like to make a motion on, on, uh, whether or not there is an issue here?
I don't think, I don't know that a motion's necessary with a, a citizen complaint. Um, I would just kinda recommend, there is a formal grievance process, um, I think the Board of Health keeps the coop licenses, so like, that would be a place to start documenting if this becomes a repeated thing, um, and then the board could consider it, but with no background yet.
Right, we've got, right, we've gotten a letter from, from the Board of Health at this point. Uh, nothing being, no laws are being broken, they have the right to farm. I know roosters can be loud, but it's the way it is. I mean, I'm sorry that you have to go through that, but I can't see us doing anything. I'm, I'm not about to say, you know, get rid of the rooster, I'm not about to do that. I won't, I won't.
You really don't care.
Uh-huh?
So you don't care.
I mean, not that I don't care, is that if this was not, if this town had a bylaw saying that you can't have roosters, we'd say, "Get rid of it."
Yes, I know.
But we don't. So it is, it-
To her stacking the town meeting, which isn't a lot of people there, okay?
Good move to the next issue, I think we're done with this discussion.
Wait, no, right.
Talking about plebiscite or something.
Right. Town meeting said-
Tag that meeting with her buddies.
I can't see that, I can't see that.
It was the marijuana hearing.
Huh?
It was the marijuana-
For the marijuana hearings, probably. But anyway, so-
It's a little bit.
We're, it's ended. Um, we heard you, uh, we understand, but there's basically, legally, we can't do anything.
Saying there is no problem.
Can't speak without being recognized, sir, so you need to stay quiet.
Right. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that legally, she's doing nothing wrong, and we cannot tell that the resident to get rid of something that legally she's allowed to have. Yes, Sean?
I'd like to move on, please.
Huh?
I'd like to move on, please.
Move on, okay. All right? That's it, sorry, that's it. Um, set the October meeting schedule. What do you think about the eight and the twenty-second, two, do we need two?
I would say we're back on to getting into budgets and so forth.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
The eight and the twenty-seven?
Eight and twenty-
Twenty-second, rather.
Twenty-second.
We'll also be meeting on the first for the school committee appointment.
That's right.
But that's probably the only topic that night.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So it'll be the eight, ten, the twenty-second for our next two meetings in October.
Laura's going to rejoin.
Huh?
Laura's going to rejoin.
Yes, Laura, you can join. Uh, Tom's not here? No? Okay, Sean, you're up, we're gonna-
We didn't vote on this, because we don't need to vote.
Huh? No, we don't need to vote. We listened to his complaint, and that's basically what we needed to do. Can you make your presentation, because Tom, he keeps-
Sure, yeah, yeah, actually, not much of a presentation, actually more of an update.
Okay. Take your time.
Well, well, I, I think what I'd like to do is, I, I wrote a letter to the school committee recently in response to, um, some correspondence I've had back and forth with the chair. And I'd like to, to read the, the letter that I wrote to the, the school committee, because I think it kinda gives some background and help you understand the direction that I think we, we'd like to go moving forward, um, or that I'd recommend that we, we, we do move them forward, so.
He's on his way, Tom.
Over the last couple of months, I've requested that we begin the process of updating the formula used to fund the school assessment. This is a difficult discussion for a number of reasons. For instance, the nuances of the budget are unique and somewhat complex, so any discussion needs to be done carefully to minimize confusion. In addition, this is a difficult conversation because there's so many people involved. The Whitman and Hanson Select Board and Finance Committee members, both town administrators, and other members of the professional finance team, town department heads, the school committee, and the district administration all have a direct interest in this discussion, and make no mistake about it, the stakes are relatively high. If the formula is not balanced properly, then the school district and the, the town departments could be underfunded, which could result in decreased staffing of services. So discussion needs to be done carefully and respectfully. This is a difficult discussion, but it's one that needs to happen. The results of last year's budget cycle made it clear that there is some tension and disagreement about the school assessment formula in our community. As a result, Whitman used a significant amount of free cash to fund the budget, and Hanson, in addition to using free cat, free, free cash, made cuts to town services in order to fund the school budget. These are cautionary signs that demand our attention. If we don't work together to work this out, our community will suffer. My objective, my objective was to introduce this topic to both select boards and the school committee, and then to develop a working group to focus on the details. Originally, I requested to be on this, the August school committee agenda, but was asked to wait until September. Most recently, however, I was informed by the school committee chair, Beth Stafford, that she would not allow me to address this issue with the committee, meaning she wouldn't let me speak at the, at the school committee. I was honestly confused and taken aback by her response. As stated with both select boards, I'm merely starting the discussion and would like to work together to develop a formula that is fair and balanced. I sincerely apologize if my words or actions have caused negativity or sent the wrong message. Please know that that certainly was not my intention. Then I wrote, "I'm reaching out to you as a member of the school committee to inform you of the situation, and with the hope that we can work together in a diplomatic way to address this issue. Building walls between us will not help our community." And I asked them to please reconsider their stance, the stance of, um, of Chair Staff.
Response.
I have not got a, a response, I mean, this is recent, just in the last couple of days. So, I mean, I wanna clarify that although I did propose, um, a formula that we should consider that I believe to be balanced, I certainly didn't say that, you know, the formula that I proposed was perfect, or it should be used, basically starting the discussion that-
Open up, uh, communication.
Yeah. We'd like to talk more about this because it's an obvious issue with the funding. At this time, they're not, they're not willing to come to the table, so I would like to still start a working group, I'd like to invite, um, I'd like to invite relevant people from, from Whitman and from Hanson to come together to start to talk about this stuff. I would, I would really like to keep the, um, the invitation standing for the school committee, so that they're welcome to come and to have a voice and to, to play a role in this. so that they're welcome to come and to have a voice and to, to play a role in this. This isn't meant to be like we're telling you what to do. It's like, hey, let's get it on the table and figure something out because we'd rather have this discussion now than in April, just before town meeting where we're at odds with each other. So I'm hoping that they, they heed the, the message and they kind of open up a little bit and they are willing to talk.
Maybe some type of a committee like two members of the, from the school committee, two members from Hanson, two members from Whitman and a couple of members of the board of selectmen. So you do not have a quorum of any of the boards, right? Two, four, four is not a quorum for the high school, for the school, right? Because they have nine, you know, and maybe work, you know, when it's budget time, talk about it as far as, you know, what they're looking at for a budget, what we can afford and come to a happy medium where it's not kind of destroy the town or the school department.
Sure. It's slightly different than that. At least the initial proposal was, was more of a, a formula that we could discuss, that we could almost plug some numbers into when we had them, that would give them an idea of kind of like what we could afford.
Right.
So that they can go back and, and kind of discuss that. And honestly, I mean, we haven't talked that much about this, but in my, in my opinion, that doesn't mean that they couldn't ask for more. That would just be, they would give a, a better understanding of what we could afford. But I would like, I would like to do that, but also I think there should be representatives from public safety. I think, you know, obviously a town administrator and, you know, town accountant or treasurer collector or somebody from the, the-
Right, the numbers.
On the, if Hanson has relevant people on their finance team that they want to invite, you know, I think it would be nice to sit down and discuss this, some of the nuances with people who are in the know.
Right.
So we could then come up with something that's understandable to people, to everyday people going into the budget season as opposed to waiting till the end of the budget seizing and, and not so. Maybe I'm not, I'm not verbalizing myself.
Right, no, no, I understand that. I mean-
The bottom line is I just want to bring people to the table to discuss this, you know?
And not, yeah, last minute, this is what we need, deal with it.
Yeah.
This discussion would start, you'd think it would discard at what time? What month?
Oh, I, we're already in September. So I mean, I don't think it's too early to form a group and get these conversations started.
Yeah. I would like to, with your permission, I'd like to reach out to Chair Laura Kemet from Hanson and see if she's open to it still. They were very supportive when I was over there and they said anything they could do, you know, so I anticipate that she will be. If we had a small working group, you know, I can work with, with Mary Beth to figure out who should be on the work group, working group and whatnot, but generally speaking, I think kind of what we've already discussed, I don't think anything should be set in stone. I think it should just be go to the working group, have some good dialogue and then bring it back to respective committees, you know, so they have some feedback.
I mean, if, if a department has an idea of what can, what's affordable, I think they, they can look at their budget a lot differently than, you know, their needs and not their wants, you know, and knowing, you know, how it's going to affect each town on a certain budget. Because that's, that's the main budget of both towns, but it's only one budget.
Sure.
Right? We have a number of budgets.
Yeah, I think one of the thing that we can, something that would hopefully be positive that would come out of this initiative is the everyday person doesn't necessarily know the how or the why as far as the numbers that we come up to with, you know, like what can we afford? From a distance, if, it seems like people think we go back and forth and we kind of are hiding it or keeping it close to, you know, keeping our cards close and not being transparent. If we can be more transparent about how we come up with what we can afford and explain it clearly, then it's not, we're not keeping anything from anybody. Our objective is to be objective, I mean, to be transparent and to show people this is exactly how we do the numbers and this is why we think it's fair and this is how we're going to distribute the funds. You know, if we have X amount of money, this is how we distribute it. If we had less than that, then this is how we distribute. So we want to be transparent. And I'm, I'm hoping that that's the, the good stuff that will come out of this discussion, not the, they're doing, you know, backroom deals and, you know, wheeling and dealing, you know. I, I think we need to get away from that a little bit. We do need to get away from that, the perception of that, so that people, you know, feel comfortable that, you know, the integrity behind what's going on financially is really solid.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that's very important because over many years, not just days, the select board has gotten a very bad rap and everybody's very isolated. And the more we bring everybody to the table and show compromise and show transparency, you know, I have nothing but good things to say since I've been on the board. There are no backroom deals, but that is literally what the public feels and I think they would feel better at their vote. I, I think an example of that is when we're asking people to vote for appointed versus elected, they simply have some distrust. And I think the way that you're approaching it is absolutely key to getting community support and back everybody because all these services are important to our community.
We'll have to put that on the table and get started, yes.
Yeah, just to, to put my two cents into, I know that, that this process, if we think back to before the Madden report, the couple of years I was on the finance committee at that time, we would just kind of put a zero in for the schools until they assessed us a number. And that was completely unreasonable. It was the largest budget, it was growing by the most, and we would get surprised forty-five days before town meeting when they certified a number to us. I think the five percent placeholder made a lot of sense to just start with something there. But I'd like to see what some of the other towns are doing, especially regional districts. And we've got comparable districts around us, not to sing about Votek, but Tom Hickey just walked in the room. But we've got two town regions, Bridgewater, Rainham, Dennis, Yarmouth, that must have similar situations where forty-five days before town meeting, they get surprised with a number that's a lot higher than they're planning for. So I do agree with the process. I think during the discussion, I disagreed with, you know, setting up the, the same number to both based on the hold harmless for, for Whitman and Hanson, but I think that they, the district would only benefit from coming to the table in a discussion like this, so I, I don't know what the opposition is.
Okay. Tom, just in time, you're up. Oh, by the way, I introduced Dr. Hickey, Tom Hickey, and I would like to say, happy birthday.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Soon.
Oh, okay.
Well, thanks, everyone. Thank you for your flexibility in your agenda, allowing me to, to have competing meetings. The presentation I have for you, which I'll move through at a reasonable pace, for your benefit, I hope, talks about the warrant article that we're appreciative that you would consider putting on the warrant regarding changing our regional agreement. As you know from feedback in this room back in December of 2023, it was suggested that our current regional agreement language says that the, the debt that we have, use the keyboard here, excuse me, the debt share that we have is currently fixed. When it's authorized, do your calculation based on student enrollment and it's fixed for the life of the borrowing. This amendment will change it to what we're calling a four-year rolling average. The process that we went, that we moved forward with following that idea was to come up with a rationale, bring it to our regional planning subcommittee, bring it to our school committee and also vet it through DESI. And that's actually, that was, that was, that took, that took a while, but it's good to be able to say that the language that we came up with met, you know, met, was met. They said it was not, it was within bounds. There was nothing wrong with the language. So those boxes have certainly appropriately been, been checked. So now I can report to you that all nine of our towns are going to schedule a special town meeting for various reasons. The town of Abington is having a special town meeting. We're the only, we're the only article on the warrant. So all of our communities want to allow folks to understand what it is and, and weigh in. The way our regional, regional agreement works is that when we have six towns affirming this amendment, then it would be considered approved at the local level and we would get the certified town clerk vote and then we would send it on to the commissioner. Technically, ultimately, the commissioner of education has, you know, has that official final say. The message, the, the reminder message is, this, this is a visual that, that has, that helped me. We do a three-year look back right now. So the fiscal year that we approve a project, we go back to the three previous fiscal years and look at the October one reports. So when you hear me say our current arrangement is three-year look back, fixed debt, that's what we have. And so that's just an, that's an example. What we want to change it to, oh, excuse me, let me, let me speak to this. Within the regional agreement, we also have language that explains how Marshfield is being on boarded. As you remember, Marshfield, this is Marshfield's first fiscal year in the district. They have a, they have a freshman class in the school now. So we, we followed the, we followed the modeling from the last time to say, until Marshfield has enough enrollment history, we would, we would have them adjust their debt share on an annual basis. And this chart, which we will eventually retire with the changing of the language, this basically explains when we would, at the time, when were we going to fix it. But we'll instead move to this model here. Whatever year you're building your budget for, the school committee certifies it in the previous fiscal year and we would look back four previous fiscal years. So there are just a couple colorful examples for building the budget for fiscal thirty-three. It gets certified in thirty-two and we look at the October first reports that fall in the four previous fiscal years. And with each passing year, one year rolls off, another year comes on. So I'll give you, I'll give you one, I'll put an asterisk next to what I'm about to say, but as of today, I can tell you that Whitman's enrollment, based on the number of seniors who graduated and the number of ninth graders coming in, is about seventeen students fewer. Now that happens to be a drop in enrollment that will eventually factor into a four-year average and adjust the debt share. And that's how, that was the whole premise. The share adjusts when student enrollment adjusts, but it's not, but by doing four years, you, you level out some peaks and valleys. This chart here shows you the current column is, again, it's back to Marshfield. What again were you doing, what was Marshfield's on-ramp and how is it changing in this proposal? Essentially, Marshfield has a longer on-ramp because we have to be able to say, I really wanted, I really wanted to be able to have a model that said, this is fair, this is comparable with the sitting eight towns who have been there. And so it will take a while, but essentially it's an on-ramp until fiscal thirty-three and then Marshfield will have enough enrollment history. Sean?
Just a quick question. Marshfield's, so if this is the first year, it's just for freshmen for them? In their first year, they didn't enroll in all four grades at the high school primarily in the freshman grade?
Primarily. We, we had, we have three or four upperclassmen who probably, they were, we did admit a couple of sophomores for the first time. We also had a handful of Marshall kids come as non-resident students, they're older, grade eleven or twelve, but the vast majority, let's say twenty-nine out of thirty-four are ninth graders.
Makes sense.
Yeah. This is just, it's not a bingo card here. This is, you know, this is just showing how we arrived at thirty, you know, fiscal thirty-three. Four years of having four grades of kids in the building, just like everybody else. That's why that on-ramp is a little bit longer. This is, this is a summary slide that, you know, essentially says what I've, what I've already said, you know, where, but we do. Now, what I want to try to show you is, okay, so you've got, you've got Marshfield's calculation and then you've got the, the sitting eight. And so here's a, here's a, here's a, just a, a, a quick example to show you how this would braid together. Let's pretend that while we're in this on-ramp process, we're going to have to apportion a million dollars in debt in fiscal twenty-eight. We look at what Marshfield's share of the in-district enrollment is, and in this model it's twenty out of fifty, about five hundred, rather. So we calculate a share for Marshfield and then we calculate the shares of the other eight towns. And so in this, in this example, town A, which would have had a hundred and sixty thousand dollar assessment and at, with sixteen percent, ends up getting a slight haircut because Marshfield, this is the whole point, Marshfield is on boarded into the district, they're helping to share in the costs. And so that, that share essentially shows up as a reduction for the other towns. When we present annual budgets to you going forward, we always have a debt service line and I anticipate we would just have a line showing that, showing that offset. I think the idea was a good one and I think it shows that this model is, it's a pay-as-you-go model that's fair based on shifts in enrollment that might happen over a thirty-year period. Thank you.
That was it?
I'm afraid so. If you'd like, I could-
That was very good. Quick.
But, but I guess I'll just add one more point. I do see the trend for the next few years of Whitman's enrollment at our school. This was predictable. I'm not shocked by it. I don't think it's, there's, there's nothing wrong. Whitman was, Whitman was apportioned, let's say twenty seats. They were sending an average of forty-one students. We knew that when we bring in another town and you still have the same enrollment ceiling, that the communities that have, that are most oversubscribed are going to see a, a market correction. And so I would anticipate over the next couple of years, seeing something similar. I don't know the exact number, but this first year experiment seems to be, it seems to be panning out that way.
Also, Tom, you want to talk about the fact that Whitman's enrollment has gone down. If it continues that trend when, when this agreement passes, that will lower our cost of-
There's, there's, yes, Dan, there's always going to be an immediate, I, I think there's only been very few exceptions where if a town's enrollment goes down, that the assessment goes up. So from an operating point of view, absolutely. For, from a debt share point of view, it'll factor into a four-year average.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for, for really pushing the amendment. I know it must have been an incredible amount of work and a lot of time and effort, so, you know, really thank you.
You're, you're welcome. A, a good idea is a good idea, no matter where it comes from. I am happy to report, I have not heard from any of our nine communities expressing, you know, reservation or, or concern with this. So I look forward to having these conversations elsewhere. Our first town meeting is Hanson, October seventh. Our last town meeting is Marshfield, December sixteenth. And so we will, we'll probably see in early December, again, I think it, it might actually be the same night, December second. Hanover is also having a town meeting, so we may be at that sixth town threshold, but I'll, I'll certainly keep you posted.
That was going to be my question. When is the sixth town meeting? That's the one I was going to look for.
Cohasset is December ninth. Yeah, I think it might be, I think with two, Hanover hasn't set theirs yet. I think they are going to choose, I think they are going to choose December second and Abington just opted to go for a special on November twenty-fifth. So I think if I do the math, that's, that gets us to six or seven by that point.
Yes.
Just want to say thank you. I think that this could be a game changer for a lot of Whitman voters because I think that we have twenty-six percent of the enrollment is what we have had.
We're, we're, if, if we were to calculate the first year of whatever we end up doing, it would be twenty-four point two-five, same ballpark. It's a big number.
It's a big-
And so locking that in for thirty is tough, especially if we know market corrections were coming. So that was the, that was the logic to the idea and I think it's sound.
It's great. No, I, I'm thrilled about this. So also I know that because we have Marshfield coming in, that will take down our number some, you know, we would think. Other communities, am I correct, have also now this year, you've seen a little increase in Situate, Cohasset or some of the other towns?
That's, that, that's a great question, Mary Beth. I can tell you, based on some unofficial numbers, Cohasset, Cohasset in my time there has probably never hit twenty students in total, but they went up four students from like nine to thirteen. Norwell in the last several years has hovered in the low to mid twenties. There, they've been up, down for, up and back. Hanover and Situate have been the biggest, the biggest sea change. They've doubled their enrollments in the last, in the last four or five years. Marshfield's enrollment this year is right, as if it ended today, would be four point eight nine percent of the in-district population. So using this modeling, that's, I'm saying to people casually, so if I'm talking about, say, the building project and the cost impact, I'm saying casually that if this year, if we took this and it just repeated itself for the next three years, they send us about thirty kids, it's the same size building, they're probably about sixteen percent of the district, right around the time we would be approaching the, the high watermark of, of borrowing. So if we, when we produce numbers for this building project, we are going to be very[1728.03] going to be very clear what's a fact and what's a projection. But we will, we will make those projections about enrollment. The town of Pembroke formed a regional planning committee. I actually have a meet, I've had two meetings, I have another meeting, another meeting next week, to explore, to, to talk further about it. What I would anticipate is that they would, I think there's interest. I think, like all of our small communities around here, competing capital demands, where does this fit on the priority list? But there is definitely still interest. And if that were the case, if that was part of our conversation, I would be saying, we have communities in our area that are not affiliated with a vocational school, and that includes Duxbury and Hingham and Hull. But Pembroke has expressed the most consistent interest. So if a future school committee decided to bring an amendment forward saying, oh, here we go again, they're amending their agreement, they're adding a tenth town, it would be a conversation, I would suggest, similar to Marshfield, with the exception of, you gotta factor in what the towns have started to pay towards the project. But if you could come up with a simple formula that says, yeah, we'll do pay-as-you-go, you know, we'll make some educated guesses that maybe they'll be ten percent of the district, but it'll be, it'll be a conscious decision about how many seats, what's that gonna, how's that gonna impact my community. So that's a long answer to a short question, but there's def, there is definitely interest. So we'll just take one step at a time.
Yeah, Tom, you think Hull would come back, looking to come back with us? Had their shot at it, but-
We, we, they formed a regional planning committee in twenty-seventeen. They explored the matter and decided not to pursue it. And I think that had mostly to do with low enrollment.
Yeah.
And, and, and what, I'm not sure. We've had no outreach from them since. Yeah. Sean?
And a quick question. So if we vote at the special for the, for the amendment, just for the people, when do we vote on the project, the building project?
The building project vote would be January twenty-fifth. That's a Saturday. All nine towns have the ballot question from nine AM to five PM. It'll be publicized, as any local ballot question would, in terms of the precise location and the parameters. This is considered what's called a special district election. Secretary of State defines it a little differently. So it is an in-person and absentee. Those are the, those would be the two voting options. But it is, so whether it's Cohasset or Whitman, it's nine AM to five PM. The polling places are decided, determined by the town. The town clerks have been fantastic, working with and coordinating throughout this process. And the costs of this election are our responsibility. And so we're, we're well-prepared to pay on those, reimburse or pay on invoices for whatever expenses our towns incur as a result of this election.
And that would be a majority vote of all nine towns?
Yes, it's, I would say it's similar to electing a state rep, state senator, congressperson. Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's, it's an aggregate yea or nay. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other further questions?
No, happy, happy to help.
Very much. Thank you. And you made it here, Tom.
Next time, I'll try to be here a little sooner. I hope you really, I hope you weren't waiting too long.
No, worked out perfectly.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is our town administrator's report.
So I have several things. Quickly, I'll just go through these. The first one is a request for use of the DPW administration building. The town has recently received two requests for the use of the DPW administration building when the new DPW building is up and running and the administration building is vacated. One was from the Whitman Food Pantry, and, for the Whitman Food Pantry, and one was for a Whitman museum. So I'd just like to quickly read the two letters, if I may. Okay, so this was St. Vincent de Paul, Whitman Food Pantry, thirty-three Blake Street, Whitman, Mass. And this letter is being sent to you regarding the use of the existing DPW office building on Essex Street. We are delighted to see a new structure being built, and that a DPW office will be a part of the new structure. As the new structure moves towards completion, the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry would like to be considered as a future occupant of the existing DPW building. Currently, the St. Vincent de Paul Whitman Food Pantry is housed at the corner of Whitman Ave and Blake Street. We occupy the middle bay of the building, owned and used by Milligan Safe Company. We could not ask for a nicer, more cooperative owner, but we also realize that it's likely that we should be looking at a space that meets the needs of increased food requests from our neighbors in Whitman. We would like to think that our services, services would eventually not be required, but the reality is that food insecurity remains high in our town. As a result, we would like to be considered for building occupancy once the new DPW structure is completed. We are aware that our group would have to evaluate the building to see if it meets our needs going forward, and that our needs meet the occupancy requirements established by the town. We look forward to hearing from you regarding our request, and having our request placed on the list of interested parties. We see the site of the existing DPW office, an important addition to assist us in advancing our mission and providing food for the needy. Sincerely, Richard Clark, President, St. Vincent de Paul Whitman Food Pantry. The other letter is from Ken Layler, and of one eighty-seven Auburn Street in Whitman, and regarding the building sought to honor John and Natalie Campbell, along with Marie Layler. Gentlemen, I would like to see John, Natalie, and Marie honored with their vision of a museum they were searching for. Marie and John were active in the history of this town, one in the Historical Commission, and the other with the Historical Society before their demise. If a location were found, then the general public would be able to view the town history and the many artifacts currently in storage. I also realize that the Historical Commission is currently in dire need of a larger space other than their current location in the town hall. I know the Department of Public Works Administration Building will be available once the new building is occupied and functional. I am differing, I'm sorry, I am deferring to the Select Board for their insight in the various projects within the town. If a building or spaces become available and is appropriate for town use, then I ask that you take action to acquire such facility. I ask the Select Board members to consider the possibility of the old DPW admin buildings once it is vacated. As an individual of the town, I'm not requesting, but only suggesting the possibilities. I hope the Select Board will discuss this matter with some sort of positive results. I appreciate your time and consideration pertaining to this matter. Thank you, Ken Layler. The Select Board will consider various requests received as the project approaches completion. So these are two that have come in. But, you know, we still have quite a ways to go before the new DPW building is finished and the actual admin building is vacated. So these are just two, and I'm sure that you'll consider everything that comes before the board.
When we were put in at the, I'm on the building committee, of course, and when we were putting things together, and when, when it was suggested to add the admin building, to add a front space to the new building, and vacate the old one, I brought it up at our meeting, and said that would be perfect for, for a historical museum, something that the town, that John Campbell has done for years before he passed at the, in the Marble Street, when he was there with his company, right? And then when he moved down by the T Station, he took his own building, paid for it, everything, and did a museum. Because there was nothing, no vacant, you know, empty buildings in town to do it. And as soon as we talked about that, I said, that would be perfect for the museum. I didn't think about the Food Pantry, because they already have a building. It may, I don't know if it's too small.
I believe this.
But, you know, for the increase, but they have a building, and my opinion is that the Historical Committee doesn't have one. Everything is just boxed, and it's at the armory. And I think we're doing the town an injustice, not to show what, you know, what this town is made of. Every town that I know of has a museum, but we don't.
Both good ideas, and, both good ideas?
Oh, they're both good ideas, but I think, like I said, the Historical does not have a museum, and the stuff is boxed.
Is the stuff in, in, is there a possibility it might go get ruined from being boxed? Oh, thank goodness.
No, they took care of it.
Thank gosh.
Right. Any, any other comments?
No, two great ideas.
Yeah, they're two great ideas. So we'll just see. Now, is this something, now, does this come under the Commissioners? Because it's their building. Would it come under their board?
I imagine they're turning the building back over to us, right? If they, if the DPW leaves the building, it's ours again.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that one of the DPW, they want to keep it, saying that they need it for, for space, for as far as, you know, paperwork and stuff like that.
I've heard that as well.
Yeah, forget it. No, they, you know, that can be taken care of.
There's room for paperwork in the old police station downstairs if they need it.
Yeah. But I mean, um-
Be nice to hear from them, though, what their opinions are. Be nice to hear from them, for sure.
Without a doubt, yeah. But I, but as I say, my vote would probably be for a Historical Society, you know? And you can honor the three people by each having maybe a separate spot in the building dedicated to them, as far as what they've contributed, or, I don't know what you name it, name it, you know?
Something to be-
Campbell Layla Museum, whatever, wherever the town comes up. Now, is something like this, would town meeting have to make that decision, or we could make it?
I believe you could make it, but I will check with town council to-
Yeah, I mean, where it's a town building, you know, tell the Food Pantry, I mean, we have a couple of building, Park Ave, right? And then we have, I know that, but I'm just saying, something with that. And what about the, the building on Route eighteen that they gave us the keys to? That, just sitting there, I forget.
But that's not the town's property?
Yeah.
It's in tax title, but it's not the town's property. Yeah. Okay.
What else?
I have three other things. The next one is, all of you received a letter from the Board of Assessors this past week. It's complicated. It's been forwarded to town council for review, and this matter will be addressed at a future meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Also, the special town meeting, an annual town meeting start time change proposal. The town has scheduled a special town meeting for Monday, December second, twenty-twenty-four. Special and annual town meetings currently begin at seven-thirty PM. The town moderator is requesting a change in the start time from seven-thirty PM. At first, he had said seven, but he said six-thirty would work as well. So I'd just like to know, is the Select Board interested in changing the start time for the upcoming special town meeting? This change would not need a bylaw change or a vote of the registered voters. However, I'd also like to know, are you interested in changing the start time of the annual town meeting to an earlier time? This change would require a bylaw committee approval and a bylaw change, which would need to be approved by the voters at a future town meeting. So you could discuss just the special town meeting for now, or votes, whatever.
What I look at is, and I get to, in the special town meeting, if we tried it, we'll say at seven, drop it down to seven. But you gotta remember, you get the average person that, you know, gets out of work at five, they gotta get home, whether they eat or they don't eat. I don't want to have it, I know that you want to get it earlier because it runs late, and people leave, some people leave because it's running late. But I don't want people not to show up or show up late-
True.
-because it's too early.
True. It's just, he-
It's a suggestion.
Right. Mike Seeley asked the question, so I thought I'd bring it to the board. It's up to you.
Yes.
I like the idea for the annual, because it, you can feel the tension at ten-thirty or eleven, when we're trying to finish, and people are really getting restless, you know, and rightly so. I think just adding that extra hour on the other end would be better. It's not ideal with people coming home from work, but I think it's better than asking people to stay till eleven, you know, or, or later. I don't know that we need, we have a time crunch with the special, you know? So if we don't have the time crunch with the special, I think maybe wait until eleven-thirty, I mean, seven-thirty. But if he's doing it as a trial to see for the annual, I mean, that, that makes sense to me, you know?
Actually, let me just check his email here. Can we start ATMs and special town meetings at seven instead of seven-thirty? Not typically a big deal for special town meetings, but annual town meetings can go late, and an earliest start time might work better for people. So that was just his comment.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
I'd be interested in doing it as a trial, Sergeant.
Yeah. No, no worries. I, I am the strange person that's up early and, and to bed early. So to me, seven seems more reasonable. And if people want to get here, that might be the one night they get pizza instead, you know? I, I think that getting home four or five o'clock is plenty of time to get to town meeting, since we're only a two-mile-by-two-mile type, you know? So-
Yeah, we may want to try it for the special town meeting, and see, at seven o'clock, and let's see how it goes.
And then we not do anything about the annual, we'll just start with the special-
Right, and we'll see how it goes. Right.
Yeah. If you could maybe have a vote on that, to change that.
Right, do I hear a motion?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
In order to, in order to change it for the annual, would we have to potentially have a, is the warrant already closed for the special?
Yeah, actually, when we opened it, we said the close would be today.
They say if there was an article on the special for the change of time, but otherwise, there does have to be an article in order to change the start time?
Yeah, it's a bylaw.
It's a bylaw?
Yeah.
So we'd go through the bylaw committee?
Oh, so we get a wait? Sure. So there's a process anyways?
There's a process on the annual, because it is a bylaw.
But not the special.
The special, no. So we can vote on the special?
Yeah, I guess so. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
All right.
Seven o'clock or six?
Seven. I agree with Dan about the six-thirty, too early.
Is this just for this one special? Just for the one-
For the one special.
Just to see how it goes.
Okay, very good.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, yeah.
Good.
Maybe we should motion it for the, for the annual as well, just to start the process, giving them feedback that we're kind of okay with it. And then if we get feedback from the special that we don't love it, we can probably pull back on it. But I feel like getting the, you know, communicating to the bylaw committee that they can start the process of researching and discussing it.
That makes sense.
Not a bad idea.
No, change the-
Please commit the motion.
Motion again.
Would you like to change your motion?
Yes, I'll change the motion.
To both the annual town meeting and special town?
Yes, for seven o'clock.
Okay.
Did you get that? Okay.
And the intent with the vote for the annual would be to send notice to the bylaw study committee, so they could start that process?
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
Okay, yes, I do.
Okay. That being said, uh-
Two more things. I'm sorry, yes, I do have two more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hornster Farm. John Hornster has expressed an interest in leasing a town-owned small parcel of land which abuts his farm, so that he can bring cows to Whitman, to the Whitman location. The small parcel of land was taken into tax title back in two thousand nine. It's not quite three-quarters of an acre. If the board is amenable to this idea, I will have town council draft a lease for this purpose be your consideration at a future meeting. And when I spoke with him, he said that he wants to bring back approximately twenty cows from Norwell over to Whitman.
Now, where? Next to the-
So it's on, if you're just going down eighteen, towards East Bridgewater, you know where the parking lot is?
It's the one behind now.
It's a little strip back there.
Yeah, there used to be cows there at one time.
Well, I remember when they had cows, sure. But if you think that's a good idea, then I'll contact council.
I don't have a problem with it.
Sure, I do.
Yeah?
The residents have been asking for it.
Yeah.
Often on Pride, oh, two, three, two.
We can take a vote, just to-
Go ahead and make a motion to accept it.
Yeah, second.
Any other discussion?
Actually, yeah, just, A-4s, drawing up a lease, would we look to seek maybe the tax, the estimated property tax we would get from the land as the payment, something like that?
I think that sounds reasonable. We actually did, the Assistant Town Administrator and I put that together, based on the current valuation and the current tax rate.
Three-quarters of land is probably negligible, but-
It, it was. It was, what we came up with was a little over fifteen hundred for the year.
Yeah.
Nominal. At least it would be the taxes that we would have been getting if it was on the tax.
We told it.
Yep. And I have one last item. I'm sorry.
Do we get a vote on it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll move it on to council. Thank you. Okay, open space and recreation plan survey. We've spoken about this before at previous meetings. But the Old Colony Planning Council, OCPC, is partnering with the town of Whitman to update its open space and recreation plan, OSRP, a critical tool for preserving and enhancing the town's natural and recreational resources. The goal of the OSRP is to evaluate Whitman's open spaces, identify recreational opportunities, and develop strategies to address the town's evolving needs. By updating this plan, the town aims to ensure that its outdoor spaces meet the expectations and priorities of the community. Currently, a public survey is live, giving Whitman residents the chance to share their opinions on the town's open space and recreation needs. The survey seeks input on key issues, such as the strengths and weaknesses of existing recreational facilities, open space priorities, and opportunities for improvement. The survey can be found at www.surveymonkey.com/r/whitmanosrp. There are also postcards that have been placed in town hall, and they're going to the library as well. I think one was put up on WHCA's website, or information there. So it'd be great if people could take that survey. Yes.
So in plain language, you get to vote on where the town designates funds, on what to, what to either build or develop as far as our, our recreation, open space. So whether you want more of like paths in the woods that keep things kind of natural, or you want to have more like soccer fields or a skate park? I mean, there's a variation of, of questions where we're actively getting feedback from the citizens, and then based on their feedback, that'll give us a direction as how to, how to funnel our funds.
Right.
So it's important that we get feedbacks.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Okay. I need a motion to go into a-